Mayor, will you control the timing of people's...
We're live. Good job.
Sit down and we'll start the meeting.
All right, good luck.
Save them. Save them. Save them.
We're live on all our channels.
We're going to call this City of Gallatin Council Committee meeting July 27, 2021, to order. Roll call, Ms. Ketchel, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Alexander.
Present.
Councilman Phan.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
And Councilman Overton.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Ketchel. We don't have any minutes to approve for this evening. We'll go straight to public recognition. Anyone here from the public that would like to speak, please come state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Councilman Alexander. I did have one thing that's on the agenda tonight that I just was actually discussing with several of our councilmen here, but I wanted to just kind of let you all know that the food trucks that you're talking about tonight, the concern that I have, and I don't know if it's actually addressed in the ordinance that you have the details for, is if a food truck parks in front of an existing brick and mortar restaurant, and just my concern for that restaurant and how it would affect them. So if you could discuss that specific detail, and I was wondering if the public right-of-way details that are in the ordinance, how it's written, address that issue enough to protect our existing brick and mortar restaurants. Thank you.
Good evening. How are you all? John Boone with Grill Works Catering and Event Design LLC. Speaking on behalf of the food truck ordinance, so we have this, I'm trying to go over it, so this is just a few points that I would ask you to consider, reconsider, some of the things that I've seen in here. Speaking to what she just said about parking, you know, in front of an existing restaurant food truck, most food trucks would not do that unless they were invited there, it would be kind of foolish. You know, people are coming to that location to eat, not going to eat off of your food truck. We actually go to existing buildings that don't have food because they invite us there so that their clients can have food. The other items that I would like to speak to, one I haven't gotten to, I've heard, the hundred dollar fee. Hundred dollars for a mobile vendor in every location that we serve at. We just served yesterday, I don't have my, no, I'm just saying, cities. If this is established, and I have a church member at, we go to Joy Church in Mount Juliet, and my member that sits in front of me is Ray Justice, the city councilman, asked me, said, hey, when they finish that, let us see it. We'd like to be able to do something like that because we want food trucks here. Okay? But if we have to pay, we were in White House yesterday at the high school orientation. I don't have my calendar, but we're all over. If we have to pay a hundred dollars every place that we go to serve as opposed to people who have brick and mortars that pay for where they are, that will not serve us well. Just to continue, you know, to consider that, please. The other is that the hours of operation. I see on here that you were talking about ending operation at nine o'clock, and I think something was saying, starting at 10:00 or something like that. I don't see any place where, I'm trying to find, figure out why you're making a difference between the food trucks and other food vendors, food purveyors. We serve breakfast. We've served breakfast at the place on Airport Road that does the pallet sales, forget the name. We have caterer, catering people that ask us to come out, and I know that's different from a regular, but we serve at 10:00 or 9:00 until midnight. We serve the hospital. This would prohibit us from doing that. We serve second shift employees at the hospital because at that time of the night, they have no other options. Okay? So we choose to go and spend a few hours out there serving them food because as opposed, you know, they don't have other options. So again, the time, the fees, and there was something about noise too, and I'm not sure what Chapter 10 says about noise, no noise coming out, but you know, we have to holler out our windows. When we take an order, we cook to order. Most food trucks do, many of them don't, but we will, you know, yell out the window, order number or name. I don't know if that's something that Chapter 10 covers or not, but just, you know, again, as we said before, if you, as you're going through creating this ordinance, which we invite, we know that something needs to be put in place, right? So that it will serve our industry as well as the community, just invite us in and have a conversation with us, whether it be the local food truck purveyors, or people from the area food truck association, or the national food truck associations. We're the ones who have the experience in this industry and can let you know what will work, what will not work. Some things, again, are going to run people away. It's, if you're trying to get the development, economic development, and us in the area, then work with us and we'll make it work for everybody. Thank you.
Anyone else from, on public recognition? Come at this time, state your name. Anyone else on public recognition? If not, public recognition is closed. Now we move to Mayor's comment.
Thank you, Councilman Alexander. Couple of things that I just want to mention to you on upcoming events. On this Thursday, there is a multi-employer hiring event at the American Job Center. It's from 9:00 a.m. until noon. This Saturday evening is a boat-in movie at Lock 4 Point. This is sponsored by Rock Castle Wealth Advisors, and the time on this is from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m., so you can actually watch a movie from the lake. On the 3rd of August, which is next Tuesday, our Gallatin Police Department is sponsoring a national night out in our City Hall parking lot. It's going to start at 5:00 p.m. They're going to have hot dogs, chips, and backpacks to give away until they run out. So please stop by and visit them on that evening. On Thursday, the 5th, there is an American Red Cross Blood Drive at the Civic Center. And then finally, I want to mention on August 9th, there is a Shock with a Cop Santa Classic Golf Tournament. This is raising money, of course, for the annual event where our police and fire departments take children shopping at Christmas time who may not otherwise have a Christmas. So that's a great opportunity for you to support that. Last thing I want to mention this evening is this Friday night, you can watch our own Gallatin resident, Ms. Taylor Black, compete for Miss America Outstanding Teen. I've been looking for the streaming information. I have not found it yet. Supposedly you should be able to watch it on streaming, and I would encourage you to do that. Say a prayer for her, cheer her on, and let her know that we are, she's already there. So let her know that we're thinking about her and excited for her, and I think she is going to make everyone very, very proud. So look forward to that. On Friday night, that will happen at 4:30 Central Time will be the competition. So that's all we have.
Thank you, Mayor.
Could I just add that we should be supporting tennis Sandgren in the Olympics?
Absolutely. Thank you.
He's a Gallatin resident and is in the Olympics right now.
Yes, has one, has two more matches to win to actually medal. So yeah, same thing about Mr. Sandgren. Let's send him our well wishes. He is very visible on social media, as is his mother. So send them some good vibes. He, when he left for, well, when he frequently leaves for tennis matches, he's wearing Gallatin gear and supporting our city all over the world. So thank you, Ms. Love, and I feel terrible that I didn't think of that, but absolutely, how cool to watch a Gallatin Olympian.
All right. Now we move on to the agenda for the night. Item number one, name of roadway on Albert Gallatin Track Extension Project. Mr. Tuttle, City Engineer.
Thank you, Councilman Nick Tuttle, City Engineer. And I did include in your packet, although when I saw how it came through, it doesn't look very clear, an illustration of the roadway segments that we're talking about and talking about naming. And then I also realized that there was a little bit of a typo in my description, so if you don't mind, I'll kind of quickly go through it just so that we make sure we're all on the same page and kind of summarize the conversation that I had with the E-911 office. So if you have a question anywhere along the way, please feel free to jump in and let me know. But after having a conversation with one of the representatives there with the E-911 office, and I found out that they actually named a new director yesterday, last night, at Sumter County Meeting, Sumter County Government Meeting, so I don't think that anything that I've state here or will talk about tonight changes the direction that I was given, though. But what we talked about, and I named the segments along the existing roadway that we have in Gallatin, and then the segment that is being built now. And so if you can see in your packet there, moving from left to right, the segment that I'm calling Segment A is the segment that is under construction. That's a brand-new segment that goes all the way out to Highway 109. And so that yellow orangish line on the left edge of the paper, or maybe the bottom of your paper, as it's depending upon how you got the page twisted, that Section A is the new section that is under construction that was, is going through the nexus development that we've been talking about. The Section B is the section that's between Bligh Avenue, Old Highway 109, and Dobbin's Pike that goes over the railroad track. So that's the section that's currently named Northwater Avenue. And then that Section C, the section that goes from Dobbin's Pike all the way down to Highway 31E in front of the Civic Center and along the municipal park, is the roadway that's currently named Albert Gallatin Avenue. So just so that we're kind of on the same page with that, the options that I listed after talking to Keith Douglas with E-911 are listed in order of preference, and, but he did feel like any of the four options are options that could be done, but there's definitely a preference that he felt like the E-911 office had on them, and so I listed them in order. So the first couple of options, number one would be, E-911 would be in full support of naming all sections A, B, and C of the roadway Albert Gallatin Avenue. So that would be a rename of the section of Northwater Avenue, which is Section B here, and then a new name of Section A to Albert Gallatin Avenue, keeping the existing section of Albert Gallatin Avenue just as it is. So he did feel like that that would be the best option from an E-911 standpoint and would not cause any complications for them. If we step down to Option Two, that's where I had a typo because what I meant to put there on Segment C or Section C, and his recommendation was, if we wanted to keep Northwater Avenue, that Section B, Segment B there, the same as it is, then, and go with the Albert Gallatin Avenue name on the other pieces, he felt like it would be best to call the existing piece, what I'm calling Segment C here, East Albert Gallatin Avenue, and I didn't type that correctly. So that would be East Albert Gallatin Avenue, which would be east of our north-south divider line, Northwater Avenue. And then the section that would, is brand-new, would be West Albert Gallatin Avenue. So you have it divided by Northwater Avenue, which is the same system that we have up and down north and south Water Avenue throughout the town. For instance, you know, the road just behind us, West Franklin and East Franklin. So similar situation. That was also an alternative that he felt like was no problem, good to go, but you would be renaming a section of the existing Albert Gallatin to add the East designation. I don't think that would complicate too much for the businesses or our own Civic Center, but it would be a slight change. So moving on down the line to Option Three is where we would be looking at keeping the Segment B and Segment C, the existing roadway names, the same. So Northwater Avenue stays just like it is. Albert Gallatin Avenue, Segment C, stays just like it is. But he felt like the new section, to differentiate it from the existing section that's separated by Northwater Avenue, ought to be named West Albert Gallatin Avenue if it doesn't have its own distinct name. And he felt like that would be okay. If I'm going on a scale of one to 10, he's kind of, you know, in a five range there of what they felt like, you know, that would mean for them from an emergency response standpoint. But he didn't, they didn't really have any big issues with that. And then finally, the last one is the request to name the new section Albert Gallatin Avenue, keep the old section of Albert Gallatin with its same name and Northwater with its same name. So you've got Albert Gallatin, Northwater, and then Albert Gallatin, no East-West designations. He felt like that would, that was something that could happen, but, you know, again, on that scale of one to 10, that's more in the two-to-three range. It's, they're not, they don't get really excited about that, having a different road name in the middle of this other road. So those were the options, and of course, you know, obviously there are other options if we were even looking at naming the road something totally different, but I know we were interested in the Albert Gallatin name, and so that's, that was the conversation we had. I'll turn it over to you at this point.
All right. Any comments from the council? I miss a question.
I was going to say, one of the problems with renaming the Northwater part was that there's so many businesses, and it would be a hardship for them to rename that. I would probably look at Option Two personally, since we have East, we have, like you said, we have Southwater, Northwater. We've already gotten a lot of designations for that. I personally...
Yeah, I agree with that too, but you know, I was focusing on, when I brought that feedback to you guys some weeks ago, I wasn't thinking in terms of how, if it changes to East or West, how many businesses might that impact, and would they necessarily have to change their address if the numbers are different for things like utility bills? I'm thinking of apartments, I'm thinking of...
New Dollar General and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, Dollar General. I think, you know, for emergency 911 services, that's what they're concerned about, but I don't, I don't think that, say it, all of a sudden became East Albert Gallatin, they wouldn't necessarily have to change billing and that kind of thing.
Well, I think the confusion would be, is if you, and this is what I believe...
Unique numbers.
Exactly. If, this is how I think that they would number it, but, and this is how most of our numbers are numbered when we have the East and West, but you basically, from that north-south designation line, you're beginning your numbers from there. So you've got the 100 block on each side, so it is important to distinguish East and West, and that's why...
Do they have to do it that way? I don't like that because then you could have the same numbers, and that would cause confusion even in a perfect...
It's possible for them not to. E-911 can do it how they want to. Our municipal code, which we were talking about earlier, that's how our municipal code describes the numbering system and the reason why our system is like it is now. Where you have West Franklin and East Franklin, and as you move along, you know, we're 132 West Main Street here at City Hall. I'm not sure if there's a 132, but there's definitely a 100 block on the east side of Main Street. So we, I think that E-911 would probably look at something different, just to try to avoid that confusion, whether we go with the East designation or we just stick with Albert Gallatin designation on that Segment C, our existing Albert Gallatin Avenue, because there is some opportunity, they kind of make their own rules, and they make those rules so that they can make sure that they have, you know, the best response times, so they don't necessarily have to follow the rule that we would have in our municipal code.
Just to keep the problems off of those folks, I'd like to see us leave it like it is, go with Option Three and just change the new name of the new road and leave everything else like it is. And you're not, you're not going to cause conflict with a lot of people because you're, I mean, you've got several businesses there on that part where the Civic Center stuff is, you've got several people there. I'd just like to see them leave that's the way it is.
That's what I'm saying, if they could uniquely number, and the situation that we're in is he kind of needs to explore this further with 911, and they're a little, things are a little up in the air right now with 911 in general. So if they had unique numbers, I don't think they would, like, for instance, I live on a north street, I never put north on my mail.
Right.
I never get, I put it, but I never get mail to it, it just comes to my street.
I agree 100%, but I'd really like to see it where they leave their numbers and stuff like they are now.
Sure. No, I don't, I can't imagine that we would be talking about changing the existing Albert Gallatin Avenue numbers. I do not think that that would be part of the conversation. It was not part of Mr. Douglas and I's conversation, and I didn't imagine that that would be part of it. So I think unique numbers won't be an issue.
Okay. I personally like the idea of putting it all Albert Gallatin.
Something like Northwater and everything? Ooh, that's a lot of people you're going to change their numbers and names of their streets. You're going to interfere with a lot of people through there.
Getting into trucks and...
You got the nursing home, you got a lot of people through there that you want to...
Well, no, 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 it wouldn't affect that part of Northwater, just that short piece.
Oh, just the little part between the two roads.
You've got the warehouses, their vehicles, their business forms.
The only thing I'd say is, I'm sorry, Paige.
Go ahead.
Is, being in business, I would hate the thoughts of having to try to change my stuff. I mean, it would take a long time, and I'm sure I would forget some people, but rooted up, I mean, it's like uprooting yourself after 39 years, I would hate to do that. I agree, I mean, it'd be nice to change that, but I would feel really bad for the businesses that have to go through that process.
Is that where the old lumber company used to be? Is that all different addresses in there now?
They have a number of different addresses, yes.
See, that's going to be a nightmare to change all over for those businesses.
And there's some residences there too, you know.
But if we just named the new road, then you're going to have a middle road with a different name, that's the only thing.
I like Option Two, if they can do unique numbers on the opposite side so that there's not mixes up with mail or billing or things like that.
Do you want to study this more, or what do we want to do?
Just kind of find out what 911 thinks they can actually do and get some firm answer from them.
So how about this? I do need to take it back to the Planning Commission and get a recommendation from them, which I think, you know, they're just going to be asking what it is that you guys are interested in. So, but it takes time to go through that process, so we'll have a month there. We should have enough time to have more conversation with E-911 and then be back to you all within, hopefully, a month and a half to two months, and allow you to officially name the road. So if you tell me that, you know, there's, you don't, I guess, that you're okay with Option Two, as long as E-911 is able to keep all the numbering system the same on the existing Albert Gallatin Avenue, that Segment C, and just add the East designation, which I don't think will complicate any things for businesses or even our own, you know, operation there with the Civic Center, then I can have that conversation and move ahead with them, and if not, then we'll be prepared to fall back to Option C, if that's, sounds like a good plan.
Sounds good.
Okay? I'm seeing most heads shake up and down.
Give it your best shot, Nick.
Okay. Sounds good. That works for me.
Any other question for Mr. Tuttle? Any other question for Mr. Tuttle? If not, we move on to item number two, Order Number 02107-DAS47, appropriating $8,782.56 for Economic Development Agency vehicle lease. Mr. Fenton, EDA.
Thank you. This figure was actually originally included in and in the budget that the mayor approved and all of you approved. I apparently did not put this in the munis as everything went forward, so it was my bad, so we just need to reappropriate the funds that were approved but not included in the munis budget.
Is it a three-year lease?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Mr. Hayes, second by Mr. Overton. Any questions or comment? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item number three, Resolution Number R2108-52, authorize the City of Gallatin to participate in the Public Entity Partner Safety Partner Matching Grant Program. City Attorney, Ms. Overton.
Yes, this is something that we get most every year from Public Entity Partners, who is our insurance carrier, has our workers' comp insurance. This is a reimbursable grant, which means it's money that we spend or have spent, and they will reimburse us for safety equipment that will help lessen our workers' comp injuries.
Most approve.
Second.
Then a motion by Mr. Overton, second by Ms. Love. Any questions? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number four.
What happens on this one? I don't think this will be quite as quick, unfortunately. This is the food...
Motion carries. Item number four.
What happens on this one? I don't think this will be quite as quick, unfortunately. This is the food truck ordinance, and just for a little bit of history, this came to me from this council because we really did not have a food truck ordinance. What we had was transient vendors that were, we have a transient vendor permit, and then we had a temporary use permit in our zoning ordinance. And what I understood from council is that you wanted a food truck or a mobile food service vendor permit that would do away with the $50 permit for a temporary use permit, and that was gonna come out of the zoning ordinance. I need to confirm before we move further that that was the intention, that we are not going to charge the temporary use permit in addition to this permit.
That's correct.
Okay. So we will continue on from there. I have handed out a, a revised ordinance from what I handed out last week. We've met, I believe, two additional times. Mr. McCord has met with my office and gave us some suggestions, and then we've met as a group with department heads that would be affected by this ordinance, and we met again this morning. And so I'm gonna go over as briefly as I can, but I do think it's important for me to, to go over this and kind of hit some highlights for you. So the first thing is, just if you look at the definitions, there's a food truck definition, and you will see that this is for food trucks or for people that are selling to the general public. So if it is a private event, it's excluded and they do not have to get a food truck permit. Then if you look on down to mobile food vendor or mobile food service vehicle, there is a new definition there. And this is a combination, and you'll see this throughout most of the ordinance, this is a combination of, we're combining, if you're a food truck or you're an ice cream truck, or if you are a truck that has a trailer or a mobile kitchen that you pull behind, that's considered a mobile food service vendor. You'll also notice, however, it has to be approved by the health department, they have to have all their health department permits. Also, there's another portion in here that does explain that if you have a vehicle and you are, you have something that you pull behind like a smoker, you cannot, you have to serve from your food truck or from your trailer. We do not allow open food service, and that's a health department issue, but that's set out later also. Then you'll notice who the permit administrator is gonna be, and that's gonna be someone out of the planning department, whoever Mr. McCord designates. And then you will notice over in the next section, 11, 12, 7, 11-273, that mobile food vendors are not transient vendors. So they will not have to get a transient vendor permit because they're getting this permit. So that just kind of explains that. The next section that you go to is location and hours of operation, and there it notes that for right-of-way and public property, they cannot operate within the public right-of-way or on any city property except as allowed by the city. And so you'd go back to our traffic parking ordinance that we just adopted and look there. If they're gonna be on city property, they have to have permission, and if they're, they would have to be in a, in a parking spot and you can't take up, I can't think of, more than four, so I don't think that a food truck is gonna fit on most streets. So they would have to be coming to the city most of the time if they're in the public right-of-way and asking for permission to be there. Then you will notice that no food truck can be left in the right-of-way or parked on any public property except during the hours set forth in this article. So that means no one can leave a food truck overnight anywhere on public property. Then we're gonna get down to private property, hit the highlights here, you have to get permission from whomever you're, you're gonna be on their property. I know we've had, Harbor Freight has been referenced several times, they would have to have permission from the people at Harbor Freight to be on, on their property. Has to be on an, you can't operate on unimproved properties throughout the city. And then if you look maximum num, maximum number of food trucks, I think what you have handed out says no more than two, but in discussing with Mr. McCord, the food truck rally, we determined that would be more than four. So now we say no more than fo, four food trucks may operate at any location unless a food truck rally permit has been issued. And then also, there's a restriction there, they cannot leave the food truck overnight in the parking area either. So each day that they, they go there, they're gonna have to take the food truck back home. It has to be vacated. The hours of operation, right now, it's set at 7:00 a.m. and ending at 9:00 p.m. And you've heard that there might be need for a later. This is what we have seen in most other ordinances, but that's up to this body to determine that you've set the hours, these, this is what we have recommended because that's what we've seen, but you're the body that makes that decision? Yes.
Question, my friend, that's only on, if I'm reading this right, that's only on public property, I mean.
No, this is on pri, we're on private property right now.
I, I think you need to mention the delineation between, say, you're working for a business providing food for their employees, this does not do that.
Craig, turn your mic on, let's see if you can hear.
What Mr. Boone was talking about a minute ago, he goes to that business, all right? Is that restricting him the hours of operation or not, since he's at that business?
If he's working for them, no, because then this doesn't apply.
If he's a, a private event where he's not selling to the general public, then this does not apply. This is for when you're selling to the general public. If you're just gonna set up somewhere and invite anybody that's passing by to come in, you know, mainly you're gonna be in a parking lot or you're gonna be on private property, but you're selling to the general public, this applies. If you're a private event and you're not selling to the general public, this does not apply.
I mean, what he was talking about, would that be considered a general public?
No, I, I don't think it would.
Okay, that's, that was what I.
Well, one of the things I see is there's several businesses and, and factories located in certain areas. I mean, if I was a business person, I'd wanna set up where everybody from those particular factories could come and.
And that would be, then, that would be the general public. If you're, if you're operating for one business and providing to their employees, but if you're opening up and letting anyone come in, then yes, that's open to the general public.
One other question I had, you, you mentioned that on site that they had to serve out of the truck or the trailer. Are you saying like if they have a ten-up?
Cannot do that.
So they have a ten-up and, and a shelf and they got a smoker and they pull it off the smoker and then?
That, well, that's not really a food truck.
That's a, and that's a health department violation, because then have the facilities that you need.
This only relates to food trucks.
Okay. Susan, let me ask you this question, like, when you go down to one of our businesses here on Nashville Pike, you see a hot dog vendor that's sitting there with his own hot dog stand.
That's a, that, we discussed, that's a transient vendor, so that's different from a food truck.
Okay, all right.
And whether or not he's allowed to do that by the health department, I do not know.
I understand, and I agree, I mean, I think it needs to be approved better.
So if they're selling like five dollars at Lowe's, are they governed by the time seventy-nine, or the business when it's open and closed?
Well, if there's a food truck at Lowe's and they're, they're selling to the general public, they would have to go by these hours. If it's a hot dog stand and they don't have a food truck or something they're serving out of, it's not a food truck, they're a transient vendor, they're not regulated by this section of, of our code.
So who's going to enforce this for us? Code department?
The codes, no. Our planning department and our police department, and that's set out in here also.
We saying that a transient vendor could open up any hours and the food truck can't?
No, and I don't have that in front of me. Connie, do you know the hours for a transient vendor?
I do not right off the top of my head.
But they are limited, I think they're limited more actually.
I think there are more restrictions, but I, I'm sorry, I don't have that right in front of me.
But that is something to consider. One thing that we didn't discuss, but when he asked about the times, it actually made me think about it, I wish we had something in there about lighting, because.
There's, there is, there are, under the operating requirements, there's things that are set out.
Okay, 'cause I, I just worry about, you know, a, a food truck in the daytime has high visibility, but come nighttime, whether their exterior lighting circumstances so that, you know, people could safely be customers.
I think there's something in here somewhere, I can't put my hand on it right now.
And I've got, I'm still confused on this, about the private property, using the hospital for an example. That's really set up there for the hospital employees, but anybody can stop and get it.
They're really, I would say that's the general public. If they're, if they're, if they're open up where anyone can come up. So if you want to change the hours, you need to say what the will of the body is.
But I guess my question is that, that's kind of confusing because they're doing it for the hospital. Using the example a minute ago, like if he goes to Lowe's and said he'd do a food truck there for Lowe's, okay? That's a private business, Lowe's, but.
That anyone can come up and purchase, same thing as the hospital.
Well, then what would, what would be a private business? What are you talking about?
It would be if the hospital had a food truck serving only their employees.
Then it would be a private business not to be governed by this, say the hospitals.
I'm saying if I'm walking into the hospital and I see the.
Well, they would need to be set up somewhere where they couldn't serve the general public.
Hey, you enforce that.
Come on, y'all.
Please.
I mean, I, I understand what you're talking about, but I.
This is, this is up to the city council, if you want to change the hours, that is your discretion, and it sounds like that's what you wanna do.
Another private business example would be on the side of an industrial business or a private business, not.
Another, what we really.
I see it done frequently, where they're having events and they're serving their guests or they're serving their employees. You know, they have it around the back, it's not sitting up by the street, it's somewhere where their employees are.
HOAs is another example, a lot of HOAs have food trucks come out for, just for their subdivision, they have them in a place where it's just for their subdivision, that would be a private event. If they are at a function, that's a fundraising function, it's just for.
Now, now, back up, okay?
A wedding, uh.
Back up, she said something about like, all right, Fairview does that, okay? They do it for the HOA. I don't live in Fairview, but I will go over there maybe and get something.
But then you'll probably invite it in.
What's the difference?
Are you a member, are they at the club or you have to be a club member? That's a different.
Uh-uh, no, they're, they park in the subdivision there and they do it for the HOA.
Are you paying for it?
Are you paying for it?
Paying for what?
The food?
Yeah, yeah, everybody, even HOA people had to pay for it, of course they do, yeah. Yeah.
They've got permission to come in, is what he's saying.
But if you're selling to the.
Come wherever they are.
If he comes in, then all of a sudden, he, if he's not a member of that HOA, he's a customer then.
Maybe the solution, the delineation would be where it's individual payment versus payment provided by an entity.
I mean, my, my, my definition of, of private, I guess, and, and public would be, I guess, private if you're going to like an HOA or you're going to a Lowe's and you're setting up because Lowe's says, yes, I can come there.
But you're selling to the general public, and so that, the whole point of this is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens. And I will add that the whole, the, one of the reasons this came about is because a fire code was adopted that requires our codes department to inspect fire trucks. So they have to inspect the fire trucks for the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens. You adopted it. Therefore, we have to set up an ordinance to say, they need to know when they have to be able, when they are required to inspect a truck, and when does a truck have to have a permit? If they're at a wedding at a private event, no. If they're at an HOA where they can only serve the HOA, that's a private event. But if you're open up and you're selling to the general public, you're gonna have to have a permit, if that's what this body, if you want a food truck ordinance. If you don't want a food truck ordinance.
I do think we're too restrictive on the hours, I think somebody should be able to serve breakfast.
Well, it's seven a, it starts at seven, what time do you wanna start it?
I serve breakfast at 5:00 in the morning.
But depending on where you are, I mean, I don't want.
That's simple enough to change, I mean.
Okay, so 5:00 a.m. until what time? What time do we wanna end?
9:30.
10.
10, 11. 11 would be fine.
I need a consensus to know what, what time do y'all wanna end this?
I guess it depends on like where the places are closing, like, are they there?
We can't do it place by place, we've got to, they've got to know when they come into our city, what their restrictions are. That's the whole point of having a, a food truck ordinance.
So, so if we start at 5:00 in the morning, what about 11? You think it'd be too late?
11:00 p.m.
So I think.
If you're a beer vendor, you might want it later than 11, depending on what that activity is.
Twenty-four hours.
11 o'clock, you'd be drunk by then anyway.
Y'all need to read that one. Twenty-four seven.
5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
I think, yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, I, I just hate to restrict them too much, but I mean, I.
Gotta have a cutoff time.
Yeah, I know, I know. And, and this.
Hey, what did we, what was the consensus?
Five to 11.
Five to 11.
For now, for now, this, this still has to go to, what?
This still has two readings to go through, and it can be amended at any time.
What I suggest is, is, is what we do is we tweak it, see what we think, and then, you know, I know Mr. Boone well enough, I'll probably talk to him after this, later on this week or something, but talk to the people and see, you know, what they, what they think about it, you know, the, the food vendors, that y'all know and ask them. Because that's what we need to do, really. So, all right, let's go 5:00 to 11, and then we'll just tweak it after that if we need to.
Five to 11. Now, we've got ice cream trucks that come next, and we have them starting at 10:00 a.m. and ending at sunset. What do you wanna do with their hours?
I, I think, I don't think it needs to go any later because we want them, we don't want kids running up to an ice cream truck after it's gotten dark.
Those times, everyone's good with those times? Okay. I'm gonna skip over the vehicle requirements that I suggest and ask you to please read those, because those are a lot of restrictions that they have to have. I will note, if you'll, on page six, we are gonna require everyone to have insurance. We also have an indemnification section if they're operating on city property, they're gonna indemnify the city like we do any other vendor that comes on our property. And for anyone who is at a place for more than three hours, they have to have, they have to be somewhere that their employees have access to a working full-service restroom. And if you look in subsection Q.
What'd you say about the restroom again?
They have to have their employees, this is a health department regulation, they have to have access to a restroom.
Okay.
What, do we have a definition of a full-service restroom?
Can ask Mr. McCord, it did say flushable, and he wanted to change that to full service, so I don't, I don't know the definition of full service. It did say flushable.
With a sink. With a sink.
Susan, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Reason why I ask, 'cause the other day I bought some delicious ribs off the side of the road, and there was a table set up and a smoker. But if they have a permit from us and have something from the health department, then they're still legal to come in here and sell to us, correct?
Well, they're not a food truck.
If they have a health department permit, yes.
Yes, and they should have.
Bet yours didn't.
Then they should have a transient vendor permit, and they should have a temporary use permit, correct, Mr. McCord?
Bill McCord, city planner, that's essentially yes, that's correct. And right now, there is a restriction on those non-food truck sales, such as you described. And we charge, because it's a temporary use, we charge by the location that's tied to the zoning. So it is $50 for a temporary use permit, and so if they want to pack up and go to another site, that's $50 for that site, so. But, but there are distinctions, and it's good that you brought that up, because the food trucks are that special category that Susan described, and they are very limited in what it's a food truck and what is other type of food vendor that's selling out, say, on the sidewalk or in a parking lot or so.
And I will say with this restroom requirement, if they're gonna be set up in front of a, a business, I'm sure the business is gonna allow them to use their restroom, so that's gonna meet their requirement, but they just have to have access to a restroom for their employees, and that's a health department regulation as well.
John D., can I ask, Mr. Harris, can you come up just a minute? Are we missing anything here? I mean, this is where it's come from, this codes department, are we missing?
Are we missing anything?
Well, I haven't finished, but...
Okay. Go ahead.
I mean, what, what specific question? Don't we want to wait till, Ms. McCord?
Yeah, let's, let's let Susan finish, just a second.
Because I, I, they may want to comment later. For the permits, we've just got here what's required. They will get a permit, they have to have it prominently displayed. I think that's what's very important right there. There's all kinds of application requirements, I'm not going to go through those.
Any questions?
What I am going to go through...
Before you go pass the permit...
Okay.
Is that a hundred dollars per...
That's what I'm getting to right now.
Okay.
Right now. Based on the discussion from last week, um, what this council told me is that we were going to do a one hundred dollar permit for the year. That one hundred dollar permit lasts for one year, for the city of Gallatin.
Instead of a year, right?
Correct, for the year. Now, I will tell you, you've heard Mr. Boone say he thinks that's too high. I can tell you that there are several other department heads that think that is way too low, so that, um...
I think it's fair.
I've talked to several vendors, I've talked to several food vendors, and they told me that's really fair. The hundred dollars is really fair for the year.
We went through last week several other cities, what their permit fees are, and that's how you arrived at the hundred dollars, but I, I know that other department heads feel like that's not going to cover the cost for the city. So I did want to, to let you know that.
I think it does need to be a calendar year, because administratively, that rolling year would be very difficult, so even if you get your permit and...
That's not the way it is in here right now.
No, we don't need to do that.
But didn't, didn't, um, Ms. Kitchell say that was going to be impossible to...
We're doing a calendar year.
What, yes, Ms. Kitchell, when we met, had said, that's what she suggested, that's the way her permits are set up. When I met with Mr. McCord, who's going to be the administrator of this, he said he would prefer if it is, and that's the way it was already drafted...
That's fine if they can do that, that's fine.
That he preferred that it be one, one year from the date of issuance.
Suits me. I just thought it was administratively challenging, so...
But that, that was his, his suggestion.
So it's just one hundred dollars annual, not every time they move something?
Right.
Correct. And they will not have a transient vendor fee, they will not have a temporary use permit fee. It's going to be one hundred dollars, and you have, need to understand that includes, codes department has to do a life safety inspection, so they have to do something. Mr. McCord's department's going to have to approve the application. There are a lot of departments that are going to be touching this.
And the enforcement.
And then we've got the enforcement of it. So that, that's a one hundred dollar fee that's going to cover all of that.
And how much did the other department heads believe was more appropriate?
I'll, I'll let Mr. Harris, do you want to speak on that?
After, Bill, uh, after discussion with Bill and, uh, Mr. Stewart today, we've come up to the conclusion it's going to cost a hundred and thirty dollars for our, I think that's besides what Ms. Kitchell's office is going to charge for a business license. So I'm not sure, is it fifteen? Fifteen, yeah, so...
Originally, it was suggested to be three hundred dollars.
So that's where we're standing now, is a hundred and thirty, to cover all the expenses.
Now, that's up to this body to determine what fee you want. Right now, it's set at a hundred, and then on the back end, if anyone, if someone gets their license suspended or revoked, which is set up in here later, or they're operating without a license for more than twice, then their fee is going to be five hundred dollars, because we, we do want people to come here, we want them to be inspected, we want them to get their permit, we want them to travel about Gallatin, offer food to our citizens, and we don't want to penalize those that are trying to do it the right way.
I think we need to highlight that, that if you don't do it the right way, you're going to be fined five hundred dollars if you're going to do business in Gallatin.
So my, my neighbor's seven-year-old little girls are out of their lemonade stand and cookie stand.
That's not a food truck.
Not a food.
It doesn't fall under this.
As long as they're not selling beer.
You buy from them, Charlie?
You will notice on, at the bottom of page eight, a temporary permit. There could be an occasion, if we have someone new that comes into Gallatin with a food truck, and they're operating, they get caught operating without a permit, we can issue a, we can say you can have a temporary permit, they've got two hours from when we get there to close down and then come get their permit. Just in, you know, on the off chance that someone doesn't realize, we've adopted this ordinance, and we don't want to necessarily say we're going to charge you five hundred, but once they know about it after that, it's going to be five hundred. So then you look at the food truck rally permits, there is a fifty dollar fee for that, and we did change that. A lot of cities, most cities I looked at, um, had a food truck rally with more than two trucks, but we have changed that to be more than four. So if you have five trucks that want to meet up somewhere, that's considered a food truck rally, five or more, and then they do have to get a separate permit for that, and it's fifty dollars.
Does each vehicle have each...
No, that's just the food truck permit for the, for the entire event.
Do they have to be inspected and everything?
Well, they should already have their permit, yes, yes.
Okay, I see, I see, yes, thank you.
So it's fifty dollars in addition to the yearly...
Yes, because they should already have their permit, this is for an event like a food truck rally. And that's because codes is probably going to have to go out, they're going to have to inspect, I think there has to be a, almost like a site plan, that planning's, planning's going to have to do a lot of work, a lot of work. Mr. McCord shaking his head, yes. Uh, on these food truck rallies, well, just in general, but when there's a rally, it's even more work, and so there does, there is an additional fee for that. But we did try to be gracious and say five rather than three.
That doesn't include things like Square Fest.
Yes, I think it would. Yes. So it'll be a, yes. Then if you go on to the next page, on page eleven, subsection D, issuance denial, the permit administrator, which will be someone in the planning department, um, will issue, and if they're going to deny it, deny any permit based on their application, has to be done within fifteen days of the application, has to be done in writing. And then there are several conditions of approval for the food truck rally permit. And then eleven dash two seventy-eight is enforcement, and there you see subsection A, citation, and citation can be issued by a codes enforcement officer or a police officer of the city of Gallatin. And then if you go down to subsection C, you have, that's how you get suspended. And then if you go to D, there's revocation. Suspension is if there's two violations, revocation if there's four violations of the article within twelve months. And then to get reinstated, that's where we're talking about a five hundred dollar fee. Any appeals, eleven two seventy-nine, denial, suspension, or revocation of a permit will be made to the mayor's office to be brought before this body, before city council, and they have to file their notice of appeal within ten days of the denial, suspension, or revocation. And now, I'm, I've hit, I've tried to hit the highlights, the high points, there's a lot more in there. I do suggest that you take it home and read it thoroughly. If you have any questions, you can call me this week. If you have any questions right now, you can ask me, Mr. McCord, Ben, Chief Bandi, the mayor. We've all been in several meetings. We did have the recorder coming to our meetings, but because the permit administrator is going to be planning department, we didn't think Ms. Kitchell had to waste her time coming to our meetings anymore.
Pretty much, basically, the only thing that we're really changing is, uh, the time from five to eleven, is that correct?
Well, we haven't read the whole thing. That's what will be on the, well, depending on if you move it to the agenda or not, I will make that change, but then anything else that you want to change, of course, you've got two readings, and you're going to have public, you know, uh, public to be able to speak as well.
Another one thing they mentioned was the time five to eleven.
Yes, that's the only thing I think that you've asked me to change currently.
And we can always amend stuff later, because it's got to go...
Absolutely.
It'll be another month before it passes the second reading, so...
Motion to move it to council?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Overton, second by Ms. George, to move it on to council. Any questions or comments? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Was that too fast, Ms. McCord? Item number five, initial discussion on proposed summary county resource authority facility expansion. Rachel and Richard, Public Works.
I think he's left me up here by myself. The county resource authority contacted us about an expansion that they want to do at the current facility on South Road. They are wanting to make a thirteen million dollar investment to expand the operation. It will still be a transfer station, they want to make up an area that is for commercial haulers, big trucks, and then use the existing area, restructure it some for individual residents, bringing in, um, their garbage for the center. Basically, they have no way to borrow the thirteen million dollars on their own, because of how they are structured. They would like to either have the county borrow the thirteen million on their behalf in September, when the county goes to market to refund, um, some of their existing bonds, getting better interest rates. They're hoping to have everything in place to just roll that thirteen million dollars in at the same time. If they're not able to do that, then they would issue a, some sort of bond later on their own, but they want to use the city's credit rating, the county's credit rating, and the city of Hendersonville's credit rating, um, where we are backing that debt, borrow, they're wanting to use our borrowing credit. Because they are a component unit of ours, it would be something that we can do normally. Folks can't borrow off our credit rating, but, um, since they are a component unit of ours, that is something that the state would allow. We thought we would have an agreement here tonight, that the county or the resource authority wants the county and the two cities to approve. I spoke with the county attorney who's drafting the agreement, and she said it's actually going to go through the county budget committee first and county commission in August, and then they would bring it to us and request our approval. The highlights of that agreement would be going back to our old structure of we're responsible for two sevens, city of Hendersonville's responsible for two sevens, and the county would be responsible for three sevens, should the expansion not be able to cover the cost of the debt. They presented at a meeting with, uh, resource authority representatives and the three finance directors. They presented a conservative projection for what they anticipate, and those numbers show that they will be able to cover all the debt, but they would like this agreement in place just in case. When the facility quit burning trash, I can't remember when that happened, um, the old agreement that was in place of the three sevens, two sevens, two sevens kind of went away. Right now, we're currently under the, uh, an agreement for the old landfills where we have to do the post-closure agreement. We're still on the hook for two sevens of that, um, but this would put another document in place just for the debt issue, um, that would, we would be agreeable to cover the two sevens if there was a shortage. So, I just wanted to mention that, bring that forward, that it will be coming again. I don't know if Mr. Hayes would like to add anything, he's our representative.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's, the reason in, in y'all, I know every one of y'all get complaints about how crowded it is, but if you look at our numbers from the resource authority, our trash has doubled in the last five and a half years, from, you know, so many tons to so many tons, and that's just in five and a half years. So that's why we got the expansion. The first expansion we were going to do was going to be a little bit bigger, I think it was going to be like nineteen million, twenty million, but we just kind of scaled it down to thirteen million. The good thing about it, she's showing conservative numbers, yes, well, I think we're going to be able to pay for it, there's no question about that. But I think that, you know, we lost Hendersonville probably when we quit burning trash, you know, they don't bring their trash up here, or a few years after that. But I think that they're going to be coming back, so that's going to produce a lot more revenue for us, too.
That was mentioned, I think it's 2023, their existing contract is up, and they will be...
Yeah, so, and, you know, and if we started this expansion into this year, we wouldn't be through with it till 2023, but, you know, it's just, it's one of those things that we have to do. I mean, you know, there's, there's no getting around it, and a lot of y'all, I think John was, I don't know if you were on there or not when we did the, when we were still burning the trash, and remember, we had to pay that every year, the city, two sevens, you know, so, but I think it's been probably fifteen years ago.
Is that a county entity?
Joint venture.
Yes, yeah.
It's a joint?
Yeah.
It's always been that way?
Mm-hmm.
Always had two seven.
What is Hendersonville doing now?
They've been subbing it out to, uh, maybe BFI or something like that, they're one of the big companies, that's what they've been doing.
They don't pick their own trash up.
Yeah. Yeah, but, but even though that they don't pick theirs up, the company that they've used for so many years chose not to come here, they've been going elsewhere. But I think what's happening now is that they're seeing that their rate is going up, 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 you know, so... But that's where we stand, so, and, and like I said, she's going, and, and a lot of us going to hinge on the county, too, if they'll do that bond, I mean...
Considering what they...
Yeah.
Are borrowing and refinancing, the thirteen million will not...
But, you know, I, I have no doubt, not a hundred percent guaranteed, but with the growth we're having, and especially if Hendersonville comes on, that there'll be no doubt that we'll be able to pay for that.
Action, I just wanted to bring that forward. Once county has the agreement, uh, or the county attorney has drafted the agreement, we'll bring it back at that time.
Do you have a timeline for that?
The county commission meets the third Monday in August, and they anticipate it will be approved then, so I would think late August, first of September, we'll be back with that.
Thanks.
Anything to add, Richard? All right, any other comments, question? Now, we'll move on to item number six, a resolution R two one zero eight dash fifty-three, authorize the Gallatin Park and Recreation Department to apply for the 2022 Blue Cross Health Plan Program Grant for, from the Blue Cross, uh, Blue Shield of Tennessee Foundation. You again?
Me again. Mr. Brown's off this week. This is the item that he mentioned under department head reports last week. He handed out, um, the drawings of the different options. Blue Cross will come in and install the whole system. We've done one city outreach, um, at Clearview Park last week, and got the community input of what they would like to see over there, and then if we're awarded a grant, they just come in and install the whole thing.
Motion approved.
Second.
The motion made by Mr. Overton, second by Mr. Fennell.
Do we, do we need to choose or which one, which option before they send it back?
Right now, we're just going for the grant.
This is just applying, uh, your approval for us to apply, and then if we are awarded it, then yes, we would have to select which one.
Chris, do you have an idea how much that grant will be that we're applying for?
They don't give us a dollar amount, they just give us the equipment, the, the facility, the structures. I have not...
It's between five or seven and one to one point.
Yeah.
With the various installations involved, and you can kind of, we learned today that you can actually structure your own to some degree and ask for different amenities to be added, and then they just fully cover it and install it, so...
This grant is approved, they'll come in and do it all, is that correct?
They will, and they also have, um, a fund or a trust of money that they will award us for maintenance, and depending on how much maintenance is required, they anticipate the maintenance funding... they anticipate the maintenance funding would cover ten to twenty years of maintenance on it, so.
That's great.
In theory, the parks department wouldn't be out any money at all, other than manpower, so.
Wonder when it would be announced who wins the grant.
Like next year, right?
When in August, we're applying in August, from August the first to the thirty-first.
Late in the year. This is our third time, so. Really got it together this year.
They maintain it, or do we?
They should, they might maintain it.
They'll give us so much money to maintain it, is that correct?
Right. We maintain it, but they will fund the maintenance.
Good job.
Thank you.
Any other question? All in favor of sending it on, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All, we are finished. We're on other business. Anybody on the council have anything?
I have a street, um, street closure request. This is kind of unique because it starts tonight, but it is more Super Prime Films. It is a production company that is doing a commercial for Amazon. It's a concept of the commercial is Amazon delivering to small businesses. They are using, as I understand, both Swinney Swift's and the 106 Building. They want to close, um, they've hired the off-duty police and have requested some barricades, which Richard is aware of. And they want to close Northwater between East Main Street and East Franklin Street. They will be finished by ten A.M. in the morning. We do have, uh, have the EMS signature. We do not have police, fire, engineering, and public works on here, but I know we've all talked about it, if anybody has any conflict to that. And it starts at midnight tonight until ten A.M. in the morning. So if you all are okay with that, we'll let them know that they can do that. If you are not, they will seek and, oh, he does have all the business signatures, so.
And a motion by Mr. Overton, second by Mr. Hayes. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Actually, eleven P.M. to twelve, uh, to seven, ten A.M. on this other form. Y'all still okay with it?
Put it on it now, go with it. Anything else from this council? Let me thank all the few people that came out tonight to support this endeavor about Clearview Park. And I do have a long, long, long list of names and support. And I appreciate you so much for going around and getting all these signatures, and hopefully the grant will come through and will have us a nice facility. Anything else? In department heads? Anybody else? If not, biting at the bits for a motion. Overton, second with counsel, again.